I'd like to call to order the May 2nd meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Note the presence of all three commissioners. I'd like to have Annika lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Take us off.
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. So I'd like to take a moment today to reflect on our achievements as a new board of commissioners to date. When we were sworn in together in January, we agreed on some top priorities that we needed to tackle as a team first. I'm proud that not only have we been able to work well together to make strides in these areas, but that we also have a blueprint for the future. We have launched multiple initiatives that directly impact the families who live right here in Montgomery County. This includes financial support for our first responders with our EMS and fire tax rebate, helping people stay in their homes with our Whole Homes Repair Program, giving county employees more time with new family members with the strongest government parental leave program in the state, investing $2 million into our county's record management system to improve public safety and make law enforcement more transparent. And this is just the beginning of what we will accomplish together. In April, we celebrated our first 100 days. We hope to keep celebrating and sharing our successes with you in meetings and through social media and news releases. And I wanted to thank the community and everyone for your ongoing support of this new board. And I'd like to thank my colleague Commissioner Mekesha and my colleague Commissioner DiBello for their service and their partnership. And I look forward to celebrating our 1,000th day.
(laughing) So do I.
On September 27th, 2026. Next up, on Monday, we hosted over 150 elected officials, community advocates, municipal managers, thought leaders, and housing experts at a special summit that focused on housing affordability and homelessness right here in Montgomery County. We hosted this program to discuss the next steps we need to take to end homelessness, the homelessness crisis, and support increased opportunities for affordable housing. I'd like to thank everyone who participated, especially our panelists, who led valuable sessions on important topics related to the challenges and opportunities that we face, such as zoning, working with developers, shelters, and so much more. I'd like to extend a special thanks to our former Chair of the Board of Commissioners, Dr. Valar Kush, our new Pennsylvania Secretary of Human Services, Gary Gillum Jr., founder and CEO of The Bridge Echo Village, a former Penn Stater as well, and Mayor Pete of Phoenixville, who shared some best practice in some of the work that Phoenixville is doing. The Homes for All Summit was a valuable space for collaboration and creating solutions around funding, housing, and other local needs. And let me just say this, our county is willing and ready to invest the resources needed to support these complex problems, and we are working actively in partnership with every level of government and community leadership. It's through collaboration like this that we'll work together towards real solutions. In addition, we are proud to announce the launch of our Homes for All website. This is a resource for municipalities who want to join us in providing more affordable housing alternatives while sharing in successes and needs of our partners. The resources are now available at homesforallmonco.org. I believe that this Board of Commissioners is committed to working together with municipalities to find solutions. Next up, since 2017, the Office of Drug and Alcohol has coordinated an annual contest with the goal of raising awareness about opioid overdose prevention. Each year, Montgomery County high school students are invited to submit artwork displaying a positive message discouraging substance abuse and encouraging healthier lifestyles. This year's contest was sponsored by Family Services and HHS's Office of Drug and Alcohol. And Megan is here from Family Services, our communication coordinator. Megan, are you here?
Yeah.
There you are, Megan. Oh, in true form with your camera. There we go. To take photos. And I know you'll be supporting this celebration. So we received over 50 submissions from 10 school districts, which received 1,000 public votes. And let me just say that this area is so near and dear to my heart. Unfortunately, you know, my family has been affected by addiction, and I think if we can start early on with educating and bringing awareness to the effects of opioids and substance use disorders in high school, even in middle school, we can prevent someone from falling into addiction. So Annika is our first place winner this year, and she is here with her parents today. So Annika is an 11th grader at Whistaken High School, and her winning submission is on the slide. So Annika, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I'm going to. So can you, so would you mind just coming up to the podium for me and just telling us a little bit about your thought process behind designing that?
Hi, I'm Annika Rastoby. As you said, I'm a junior at Whistaken High School. And first, I would like to start by thanking all of you for your support for this competition and allowing myself and other participants to express our thoughts through art. As a student, I'm very involved in my community, especially as a hospital volunteer. For the last few years, I've been a volunteer. And through this, I've had the chance of communicating with patients and their families. And I realized the urgency for awareness around this issue of drug and alcohol use and even overdose. And I became exposed to the effects of sadly overdose and even drug use. It was here that I recognized the need to create awareness about the detrimental effects. And so this is what ultimately inspired my billboard design. By creating such a stark image of someone drowning in the ocean, unable to rise to the surface and simply call for help, I hoped to create awareness, advocate, and even advocate for support for those that are struggling with addiction. And ultimately, that's what inspired me and the message that I hoped to send to everyone.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Well, this is great. And Annika, I have to apologize for pronouncing your name wrong. People always pronounce my name wrong. And I made that mistake with you.
No worries.
So, well, thank you for being here and congratulations. I didn't realize that part of your story and what led you onto this billboard, so thank you for sharing that with us. This work and this awareness is so critical and important, as you've seen firsthand. So any additional comments from my colleagues?
I'm just grateful that you took the time to do this. You could be doing so many other things in 11th grade. I certainly was not doing anything productive. But I certainly was also not...
I'm sure you were. I'm sure you were.
Physical. But, you know, I certainly was not at a commissioners' meeting. I didn't even know that county commissioners existed. And I hope that you consider, you know, when you think about your steps after school, staying with this issue and thinking about how we can address mental health crisis, addiction crisis here locally and wherever you want to be. So, thank you.
Thank you. Great. Well, thank you for being here. We're going to invite you up to take a picture, and we can have your parents come up too. Do you want one with your parents and one without your parents? Good. Okay. Not to put you on the spot. All right, there we go. Thank you. Keep up the good work. Thank you. Thank you for bringing her in. Have a good day. All right, a couple more things. Montgomery County and the Montgomery County Alliance for Prevention invites the public to attend the Prevention Day Black Party to raise awareness of the importance of substance misuse prevention and mental health promotion. The event will take place on Tuesday, May 14th, from 10:30 a.m. at Upper Marion Township Building in King of Prussia. The event is held to observe National Prevention Week, which takes place May 12th to May 18th. And lastly, I'd like to say that, you know, one of the things that Commissioner DiBello talked about was taking the show on the road and giving people an opportunity, especially our Board of Commissioners are during the day. It's not easy for people, you know, to take time off of work. And so we're committed to doing a couple of commissioner meetings in different parts of Montgomery County in the evening. So the first one we're going to do is in Limerick, and that'll be on May 23rd at 6:00 p.m. at the Limerick Township Office at 646 West Ridge Pike. And so we hope to see some new faces as well as some familiar ones. And like I said, this will be the first of many meetings, well, not many. The first of several meetings. We're going to ease into it that we'll be hosting across the county. And the last thing I'll say, I know Commissioner Mekesha will talk about Asian American Pacific Islander Awareness Month or Heritage Month. And so I just want to take a moment to acknowledge my colleague Commissioner Mekesha, who this year made history in becoming the first, I always, how do we say it?
There's a couple of different ones.
Yeah, there's a couple of...
We could go with Asian American, we could go with AAPI, we could go with South Asian.
Okay, the first AAPI county commissioner, and is it the youngest here?
Probably.
Probably the youngest. It's the youngest in the majority to become a commissioner. But listen, I've been in Montgomery County for more than 40 years, and when I had the opportunity to run with Commissioner Mekesha and then to see us both get over the finish line and make history, it just means a lot, especially to those that have historically not seen people like them sitting in positions where decisions are being made. And so I just want to honor you this month for the great work that you're doing. I know that you really care about communities of color, but you care about Monco and making Monco a great place to live, work, and raise a family. So I just want to honor you this month and celebrate the accomplishment that you made this year. Okay? So with that, I'm done.
Appreciate it.
All right. Over to you.
Thank you. Lots of history made on this board, which is something we need to appreciate. And there's a book written about Asian Americans recently called The Loneliest Americans, which sounds very sad, but I actually think part of the, I mean, we can go into what that means, but growing up, I was probably the only Indian American in my entire school. I also had a nut allergy, so my teacher asked me, "Do all Indian people have nut allergies?" So, no. Don't want to disclose my HIPAA protected information. But it was, you know, an interesting experience, and I am most inspired by my parents who did not know anything. I had never really been to the country before they took the plunge and just came here. And just a quick story, my dad came a year earlier than my mom, and she came in the fall, in October of 1973. And someone, the first week she was at home, came to the door with a knife and a mask. And she slammed the door, she called my dad, and he said, "You're supposed to give them Kit Kats." So, it was Halloween. And he explained to her. And so it's funny to me, when I think about, you know, people think about traditions and other cultures and how we celebrate those. If you think... ...commitment to serving not just South Asian communities, but really their entire constituencies. Collectively, we represent over 2.5 million people now, whereas just six years ago, we didn't have any representation. So I'm really proud to see that. And I think of our future leaders, who I hope will think about public service in terms of all the issues that we can tackle, whether it's mental health or climate and all the things that we tackle here. So I'm excited to celebrate this throughout the month. We'll find ways of lifting up our Asian American employees, who are still underrepresented quite significantly. And I would want to really encourage people to think about public service for those in your, you know, in the communities. I know your dad is president of the temple, and, you know, significant, you know, your family is very involved. Just encouraging people to think about local government and the things that we can accomplish here is really important. So I'll leave it at that. Next two weeks, I'll also talk about the fact that it's Jewish American Heritage Month, but I'll stick with that for now. Thanks.
I know we're on a little bit of a time crunch.
You can't help yourself.
I know. Well, you know, first off, you know, congratulations again for winning the Billboard Award. That was great. And we do definitely want to see young kids. It's a message that needs to be carried throughout all our schools, so hopefully you become an ambassador of that message. That's so important. Yeah, as Commissioner Wine mentioned, we passed our first 100 days in office, and it's been, it's really been an exciting 100 days. We've been able to get a lot accomplished working together as a team. And as I sit here, just how well we work together, I noticed one thing when we were, when you guys were talking, unless there was a memo I missed, but we're all in light blue today. Right? So even Lee ran, he ran back to his office and grabbed the light blue tie. But, I mean, that just shows, and I'm kidding around a little bit, but that just shows that we have a tight cohesiveness, that we're working together. As we said multiple times, that we may not agree on 100%, and that's okay, because government shouldn't agree on 100% of everything, but we've been able to successfully get a lot of things accomplished in that short period of time. We've passed some big things, as you mentioned when you were in the beginning of the meeting. But you've neglected to mention the most important thing that we were able to get accomplished in the first 100 days. And this is far as Lower Marion friends, is we got the Mill Creek Bridge open.
True.
So that was a, that was a big accomplishment, that the neighborhood down along Mill Creek was very excited that we were there getting that bridge open. So that was, that was a good time that we were down there. There was, as you said, there's just been a lot of things, and you mentioned about the meeting on May 23rd, so I won't go over that. There's a lot of cool things that happened over the county in the last couple of weeks. I've been able to, some of the stuff we had together and some things I got to myself. But, you know, there was Earth Day or Earth Month, and I was up touring McSkyer's recycling plant up in Bridgeport, not Bridgeport, Bridgeboro, thank you. And that operation is just, it's just unbelievable what they have going on up there. And that's just a true demonstration of trying to take a lot of our disposed items and recycle them and get them. And just the sorting of it alone was amazing. And it's all, the majority of it's automated, and there's a very small percentage of people working on the line to ensure the stuff gets passed through. But that was, that was a heck of a thing. And then there's a couple other things, but the one other thing I do want to point out was on Sunday, I attended SheFest. It was an annual event. There's fundraising for Laura House and that, and it was just a group of at least a dozen female performers. And they just did an incredible job of, you know, entertaining the community, and it was, it was fun to be there. And everybody just was there with their lawn chairs out and just enjoying a beautiful Sunday afternoon. There were a lot of new businesses have come into the area. We did ribbon cutting at KMM over in Hapera, Horsesham area, and then we're also down Lower Marion area because of ABA, which is autistic organization geared towards working with autistic kids and autism. So that's really incredible to see them coming into our area. And I know that they're actually planning a second location, but I won't disclose where, because I'm not sure where they are in the process. But it's definitely will be closer to our area, so we're really excited for them as well. But it's been fun, it's been exciting, and it's been awarding 100 days so far in serving with both of you. And I think that demonstrating over that 100 days, it doesn't matter political party, we can get along and we could be successful at getting things done. So I'm very appreciative and enjoy being part of this team. So thank you.
Thank you.
That's it?
Yeah, you know.
Okay.
All right. So, our goal, the big goal is we can develop hydroelectric power on the Norristown Dam. Why are we doing this? It's already an asset that we possess. We own it. In 1993, it was given to us after, by PICO. And in 2008, the PICO installed the Norristown Fish Ladder, which is something that we will preserve and preserve the environmental benefits of that while we explored hydroelectric generation. Generating local energy makes a county more energy independent. It's something that we are able to do, and it will give us the power, the ability to achieve our energy goals and also have resiliency moving forward. Next slide.
Try to fix that sound.
So this is the picture of where the Norristown Dam is, where it is in context. The big thing is in 2012, the U.S. Department of Energy did a study, and it showed that the Norristown Dam actually had the potential to generate hydroelectric power. And that really began our journey moving forward. Next slide, please. Building off of that 2012 study, in 2017, we hired Alden Laboratories to do a feasibility study. They showed that generation was design engineeringally possible, though the economics at that point didn't make a whole lot of sense. It didn't, you know, the technology wasn't available. Throughout 2021, we had numerous developers come to us interested in the dam. It inspired us that we needed to explore this more fully. We did an RFP. We, well, first we did an RFL, then we did an RFP, and that contract was again awarded to Verdantes, which is the new name for Alden Laboratories. Next slide, please.
Gabriella, can you, what's going on with the sound here?
I'm trying to...
Okay. Sorry to interrupt you.
I can do this.
As long as it's not a distraction to you.
Nope.
Okay, go ahead.
I have three little kids.
That's a good point. That's a good point.
I'll just end up hearing yells stuff. So we did this, in 2022, we got another feasibility study to really dive into this. It showed that the technology hadn't grew from 2017 and that we could economically make power on the Norristown Dam. We have the ability from the basic design, you know, we can generate, you know, 7,300 megawatt hours. To put that in perspective, that could power the Justice Center, One Montgomery Plaza with excess. And that on the current design levels, it does, you know, we will have a positive cash flow and a positive 30-year return on investment. So this initial feasibility, the second feasibility study, really shows the potential of what we have with the Norristown Dam. Next slide, please. So how did we get there? We had a permitting analysis done, and the county has decided to pursue what's called an exemption from the FERC licensing procedure. We are able to do it because it's a smaller project, because we're a government entity, and because we own it. The advantage to this is that it is hopefully a shorter and less expensive FERC process, and then we will also have it in perpetuity. A traditional license, we have to renew it every five years. We get this, it's ours forever and ever, and then we can use that as an asset moving forward. Next slide, please. So what does that process include? A lot of it's determined by FERC and PADP. I wish I could tell you, we need to do A, B, C, D, E. We don't know that yet. The federal regulators will tell us exactly what we need to do, but it will involve design, it will involve engineering, it'll involve environmental studies to ensure that the construction and the operation of the dam will not have a negative effect on the Skooko River, and we will have to do stakeholder outreach. The cost of it for the FERC exemption, depending on the studies that are required, we're talking, you know, 800,000 to 1.3 million to do everything that's required. The time it'll take, we've been told, depending on obviously what FERC requires, it could be two years, it could be over five. It kind of depends on what the FERC requirements are going to be, and then also what sort of assets we want to put into it to, you know, how many studies we want to get done at a certain time. Next slide, please. So, this is the exciting part. We've started. We have a project number. We filed the initial consultation document with FERC. We are on the road. We have a, the FERC requires a public kickoff meeting. We are having it June 5th at 1:00 p.m. We're using the Bridgeport Municipal Building, because part of the meeting is, we have, we present, we allow people to have public comment, and then we go visit the site, we'll, you know, drive, walk down to the Norristown Dam, so the regulators and the public can take a look, and we can talk about what it'll look like at that time. Once we finish the exemption process, we have different goals. We have different opportunities. We could develop it ourselves, we could hire somebody to operate it, we could partner with a private entity in some sort of leasing agreement, or if we wanted to, we could sell the dam to a developer, and then they could generate the electricity, and maybe we buy it, maybe, you know. There's many opportunities on the table. And to help us work through this, we are currently coordinating with the governor's critical investment office, Brian Regley. We're having multiple conversations with them to make sure that we are taking advantage of every funding opportunity and also making sure that we are doing the most responsible actions moving forward with the Norristown Dam. Next slide. That's it? I was...
That was pretty, yeah, that was...
Questions? For me?
This is really exciting. I'm very excited by this project. I think the idea that we could run our county operations on 100% renewable energy would be fantastic, and it would help us reach our overall goals for reducing emissions in the county. Can you tell us a little bit about how, can you go back to the timeline? I think it said, how many years to how many years?
So the timeline to get the FERC exemption, which is you can't do anything until we have that. Probably we could do it in about two years.
Okay.
Because not only do we have to do the environmental studies, but then there are mandatory comment period times that could be, you know, three months.
Got it.
So there's certain things that we can accelerate, and there's certain things that we hurry up and wait. But it all depends on what FERC is going to require, and then also... also what we're going to be, you know, how quickly and how much we're willing to invest to get all those studies done at one time and things like that. And then once the FERC is the exemption is done, depending on our route forward, if we are going to build it, just construction timing is probably about a year, a year and a half from what I've been told. And then we are very early in the design process. As somebody who is putting an addition on their house, like you talked to any contractor, and it's going to be longer than what they initially thought. But the construction process could be, that's what it is about a year, a year and a half.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Well, this is a really exciting project and you walked us through a very, a more lengthier overview of the project. So thank you for your leadership and look forward to, you know, seeing it come to fruition.
Thank you very much.
So just a couple, couple questions, just to follow from the presentation that that we gave that you what we got earlier last month, whatever it was. So if I remember correctly, the ROI was probably twenty-five plus years?
Correct.
Okay. So and what was the let the life of the turbines?
So they say after about thirty, you start to do, you have to do some refurbishment. And that has been factored into the ROI. The complete lifespan of a turbine is probably seventy-five years. But with proper maintenance, you know, there are hydroelectric facilities that are over a hundred years old.
And is and when they came up with the numbers of the potential power generated, is there flow rate charts that have been designed? Because it's all strictly based on, you know, rain, right?
Yes.
And water coming down from above, the dry and so it has to, the river has to be moving at a certain flow for the turbines to work. So is this how where's the table? Has there been a table formulated of of really identifying that flow rate and and all that? Like, where do these numbers come from?
They have come from Alden Laboratory. They did a hydrological examination using USGS data, historical data looking forward. I was, yeah, I I'm not a math person, like I do basic addition, it seems sometimes. But I was reassured when we spoke to another hydro development company, they examined Alden's projections and, oh, that looks good. So we would have seen. So based on the data that we have right now, we're confident in the numbers that it can produce.
Right. And so it really is not going to make Montgomery County energy independent because the power produced here is going to the grid, correct?
So we are able to explore different options of whether we can microgrid, which is I wonder.
Well, I'd love to see the cost projections on that.
I mean, it is, it will be interesting to see what that is.
Right.
Because of our proximity to the dam, I'm hoping it's not as exorbitant as it may be in other locations, especially based on the infrastructure that we have with this at a high speed. But, you know, the connections with PICO may not be as horrible as it could be elsewhere. There are also other options of being able to purchase the RECs, the environmental credits that are generated by that project for ours. So even though we are pulling energy off the grid, we is we are getting the credit.
Right, we're getting credit for it, but we're not actually, right, right.
Yeah. I mean, I want them to just run an extension cord up.
Well, that's what I said. I mean, and Lee could every every morning want to go plug in.
Well, we we kicked the tires based on your asking the question in our earlier briefing. We kicked the tires on that particular question with the people who actually do this for a living, even though John feels like he's doing it for a living. And, yeah, that that option is absolutely feasible. But it's one of the things we'll have to consider long term in terms of how the county decides to go.
Yeah, because I I that would be probably long conversations with PICO as well, depending on how we would tap into the line, the current lines and if we, you know, because you're not actually going to create the hydro dam and have the lines come directly off of that onto. I mean, there's a lot more infrastructure involved in in that, you know.
And the conversations with PICO have been done. They are aware, they were considering this and I'm gonna have, we're gonna have people who understand the design and engineering start to talk about that so we can very quickly hopefully get an idea of the feasibility.
Well, I still like the idea of Lee plugging the extension cord in every day.
Sounds like job security for me.
It's like a national end of Christmas.
So, all right, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Thanks for your leadership on this. All right. Next up, Emergency Medical Services Week proclamation. So I'm gonna invite David Brown up. Thank you for being here.
Good morning. Thank you for having us. We're grateful for the opportunity to speak to you about this important topic this morning. My name is David Brown from the Montgomery County Department of Public Safety. And we are here to talk about EMS Week that's held every May to honor the dedicated volunteer and career professionals in the emergency medical services community. This year is especially important because it marks the fiftieth anniversary of EMS Week to pay tribute to the emergency medical technicians and paramedics and many more that respond to your emergencies twenty-four hours a day. Montgomery County being the third largest county in the Commonwealth has a very busy EMS system with over a hundred and two thousand calls in twenty twenty-three, and there were more than six thousand calls in both Lower Marion and Norristown Borough. The top three types of calls for service were cardiac emergencies, respiratory difficulty, and falls. We need your help. And that's why I'm here today with our partners from Norberg Ambulance as well as Lower Providence Ambulance. They're also members of our EMS Advisory Council. And we also have county staff with us today. Dr. Alvin Wong is our EMS medical director. And John Serbin is with our Mobile Integrated Health Community Paramedicine Team that is assisting with overdose, the overdose crisis in Montgomery County. We need your help to thank and honor the EMS agencies and personnel that help our communities, to get involved and understand how each community needs to support their local EMS agency and the EMS system, understand and act to support EMS to ensure that they can continue to provide essential emergency services, to encourage community members to learn lifesaving skills, sign up for training, considering a career in EMS, and to provide financial help to these organizations to continue their mission. Montgomery County has a proud history of dedicated EMS agencies. Some are celebrating their eightieth or ninetieth anniversaries of service to our communities. And let's make sure that these critical services will be nearby for at least the next fifty years. Thank you for your proclamation to recognize EMS Week and to encourage everyone to support EMS.
Yeah, thank you. You you said it said it well. You know, I think about just, you know, personally and then professionally here in Montgomery County. Just over the last year, I've engaged with so many that are a part of the EMS system and, you know, they truly are unsung heroes. And I would I would encourage you and others to just share with us what we can be doing more of to be good partners and advocates for supporting your work. But I hope, you know, the tax rebate that we did was just showing our commitment to just eliminating a little bit of a financial burden for those that are serving communities in this capacity. So I just want to open the door to share more about what you'd like to see us do, either in in partnership or in advocacy. So so thank you for being here. And then we'll we'll, once my colleagues are done talking, we'll we'll bring you up for the proclamation.
Yeah, I'll just say, I concur. Hundred two thousand calls in Montgomery County is an extraordinary number of visits. And I'm thankful for every one of the workers who helped make sure that everyone was taken care of in in those instances. And and we're going to do everything we can at the county level to support EMS workers. And we're very proud that our first vote on on taxes was to give a rebate to every EMS worker and firefighter on a county property taxes. And hopefully more municipalities will take that up and school boards as well, because all of those things should help in some ways. So.
No, I, as you said, they are the unsung heroes. And and I agree that I would hope to see municipalities and school boards follow the lead of some type of tax rebate. The pay is certainly not where it should be or could be. Where where's that study at? That's is that?
The study is still in progress. It is scheduled to be completed probably in June. So next month, we're looking forward to, we're continually working with them, with the vendor that was selected. And in fact, I have a meeting this afternoon at two PM with them. So we're doing, we're meeting every two weeks. And all the surveys and studies are out to the agencies and out to the municipalities. And we're working hard at getting that completed.
Because I I believe this is true statement, but I'm not sure how many Montgomery County residents actually realize how many less people we have in that profession compared to years ago. And that's something that we really need to do a job of promoting. It is a very rewarding career because you're saving, you're helping to save lives, you're there in a time of need. I mean, they're just incredible individuals that that take on that task. And I wish we had an EMS flag that we could put raised at the courthouse. I don't even know if one exists or not, but.
We do have one. We'll have to consider.
Really, I think I think that's, I mean, that's something that we should, you know, definitely raise in honor of for all that dedication and work. Because they, you know, we have people that are running out in the middle of the night to save our friends, our neighbors, you know, our family. And they never ask, you know, and never turn us down. So I appreciate everything that that everyone within that EMS family does for us. So, you know, congratulations and thank you for everything.
All right.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
For the proclamation. Okay. Um, next up, we have public comment. Just gonna remind everyone that this public comment section is for pending today's pending votes, resolutions, bids, RFPs, and contracts. And the limit is three minutes. Do we have anyone for a public comment?
Yes, David Morgan.
Good morning, everyone. I'm David Morgan from Amblor. And I'm calling talking about Exhibit B two, two million, two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars for equipment rental. And one quick question comes, do we need to rent these things or can we have them already available somehow? And have you had discussion about trying to, in this case, and in all the RFPs, that you can have the common way of reaching the taxpayers' pocketbook that we have less taxes? Some ways we can have be aware, like you talked about with the dam and hydropower, that we can have savings, maybe a chart of savings each quarter and work towards a lower tax rate coming up? Because we haven't had thirty-four percent in four years. So that's great that you have been much more daring in your hundred days. It's really good to know that. So just want to encourage really careful look at all these and what progress we've made in trying to reduce expenses. Thanks a lot.
Thanks, Mr. Morgan.
Well, I just want to respond to that real quick. The the good news about what we're trying to achieve here is the reason why to rent, and this is to not exceed number, because the idea is to be able to do more projects in-house instead of bidding them out. So but some of these projects might require specialized equipment. So it's like either you bid them out, which will come in at a higher rate, or you try to do more stuff in-house. And and some of these, some of this equipment that we potentially would lease would be to help us do more stuff in-house. And more certainly, you can't go out and buy a whole lot of equipment for two million dollars, especially in today's market. So again, I appreciate always looking for cost savings. But I I asked similar questions about what are we doing here? And that and that's what I was, you know, was informed. So but it's a great point. But I just wanted to respond.
Thank you.
That's all. Okay. All right, we're gonna go to approval of the minutes. I'd like to make a motion to approve the April eighteenth, twenty twenty-four minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners meeting. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Mekesia. Any more comments? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Next up, I'd like to invite Scott France up to talk about an authorization of an award of an open space grant to Penny Pack Ecological Restoration Trust. And if we could, I think the team told you if we could just keep it short and sweet, that would be great.
How about we skip the PowerPoint?
That would be great.
As planned. Yes, we will keep it short.
It's a great PowerPoint.
And you did see it in the briefing. The Planning Commission seeking your authorization of a proposed three hundred thousand open space fund, three hundred thousand dollar open space fund grant to the Penny Pack Ecological Restoration Trust, a land trust more commonly known as PERC, for the fee acquisition and preservation of a forty-one point four nine acre property in Upper Moreland Township along Huntington and Edgehill Roads, known as the Junefet property. And this is where the annual carnival takes place is sponsored by Abington Health. Last December, PERC signed an agreement of sale with Jefferson Abington Hospital to purchase the property, and they intend to preserve the land's open space, agreeing to allow the hospital to continue to hold the annual fundraising carnival and horse show known as Junefet on the fairgrounds portion of the property each year over the course of three weeks. It's actually a three-day carnival with the preparation and all. Those agreements of sale has all been worked through. There are a number of factors that led to our recommendation, our open space board on April twenty-four voted unanimously to recommend that the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners award this grant. The property itself will cost four point one five million dollars. And they, PERC has arranged one point nine million in cash already, have one point six million in pledges. They secured a one million dollar conservation loan to the Open Space Institute. And they're seeking the final piece of three hundred thousand grant from DCNR's C two P two program to assist with the acquisition. And then our grant would be three hundred thousand dollars as well. And as I mentioned, that was recommended for approval by our open space board. The open space funds will come from the open space and park expansion line of the twenty twenty-four capital budget. And provision of these funds will be contingent upon execution of a grant agreement between PERC, Montgomery County, PERC's execution of a declaration of covenants, conditions, and restrictions. And obviously, PERC's successful acquisition of the two parcels. And I just to mention, a number of factors led to this recommendation. There's a whole network of open space also managed by PERC with conservation easements in this corner of the county. This will contribute to that and be right on the edge and allow environmental benefits to the stream tributaries that also run through. Public access will be allowed, including trail connections to existing trails. And opportunities for environmental, scientific, and cultural education will also be possible. So this is a great place. It's been well-loved and enjoyed by the community for many years. And so the cultural landscape will be preserved as well while providing the opportunity to enhance the natural landscape.
Great. Thank you, Scott. Appreciate that. I'd like to put a motion on the table to approve Resolution Resolution number one as described by Mr. Scott France. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Mekesia. Any more comments?
Just one quick comment is I'm glad you did a breakdown of all the monies that are going into the purchase of that property. I think it's important for people to understand that even though we're contributing three hundred thousand dollars, there's all other sources that that it takes to preserve such a large parcel. But it's also, you know, good for the community and we're able and they're able to preserve that and also be able to continue to have the carnival and all that there as well. So.
And there's a deadline on this of June thirtieth, I believe. So, you know, our ability to fill that last gap is really critical to them. They appreciate that.
Awesome. All right, we'll move to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up, I'd like to invite our First Assistant Solicitor, Maureen Calder, to talk about a couple of approval of amendments to our collective bargaining agreements.
Thank you. Last month, members of this board announced that the county was expanding its parental leave policy and that all non-represented full-time employees would be eligible for twelve weeks of paid parental leave, double the previous. double the previous entitlement. Following this announcement, we reached out to each of the unions currently representing county employees to offer to extend this significant benefit to represented employees as well. In order to do this, the collective bargaining agreements for each union have to be amended to include the expanded parental leave policy. The resolution before you allows us to enter into the amended agreements with each union to provide for 12 weeks of paid parental leave to all represented full-time employees.
Awesome. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number Two, as described by Ms. Maureen Calder. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment? I would just like to say, you know, when we think about all of our employees, I'm so glad to see, you know, the team work to amend these collective bargaining agreements because our friends in our unions deserve, and our employees that are a part of unions deserve to have this great benefit. So thank you for your work there. Any additional comment?
Yeah, I would just echo that and say, I think it's a great thing that we're not trying to renegotiate anything and making sure that when we pass a really important policy that it applies to everyone. And I'm glad we can do this. Thanks.
All right, moving on to a vote. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Casperen Halen. Is she?
It's me.
It's you?
Yes.
All right. So if you could review the personnel list for us.
Sure. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Commissioner's Department's Personnel List. It is a three-page document dated May 1, 2024 with a timestamp of 9:30 AM. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for your consideration.
Great. I'd like to make a motion to approve the May 2, 2024 Personnel Presentation, as given by Maureen. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Mekesha. Any board comments? Hearing none. We'll move to a vote. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Advertisement of Bids, RFPs, Montgomery County, Exhibit A. I'd like to put a motion on the table to approve the Advertisement of Bids and RFPs for Montgomery County on attached Exhibit A. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comments? Moving on to a vote. All in favor? Aye.
Oh, sorry. Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, Awards of Contract, Montgomery County, Exhibit B. I'd like to make a motion to approve the contracts, awards, amendments, and renewals for Montgomery County on attached Exhibit B. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Mekesha. Any board comments? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. All right. Next up, general public comment. Who do we have? Jim Olick. Hi, Jim. How are you?
Good. How are you?
I'm doing well.
Sorry about your mom, by the way.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that.
Jim Olick, we're sister. I'm here about election integrity again today. This last election was not good, performance-wise, by the county when it came to mail-in ballots. A lot of people who came to my poll didn't get them. I had one lady come to the poll, didn't get the mail-in ballot. She ended up voting by provisional. She goes home, she got one in the mail. So what happens if she fills that one out, sends that one to a drop box? Now you've got two votes sitting at the county that have to be adjudicated by a person. And that's where the possibility of errors and fraud comes, when you have set that situation up. The judges of elections had a list of all of the mail-in ballot people, absentee ballot, and status. Okay? So this far column here, the very far column, was blank. That was the actual ballots that were mailed in to the county. Now, this was supposed to be updated as of the election. They got a list that was from a week prior to the election. So none of the mail-in ballots had been recorded. So how does a judge do their job when they don't have data? Okay, so something's got to be done to correct this list problem so they get the most recent updated list as of the election. Whether it's somebody drives it to each poll, you know, the provision they made was mail it a week ahead of time. But, you know, it was basically useless, other than the fact they knew they applied for a mail-in ballot. So, you know, that's got to change. And any time you get that adjudication process, to me, is a problem. So everything's got to be done to minimize the amount of time that you're, have human interjection into the system. So I think that needs to be worked on. The other thing is that it looks like you have people who moved out of state who are still registered and voting in Pennsylvania. I just started doing my little investigation for you. And, you know, I have a couple people who moved allegedly in like 2020, 21, and they're voting in the '22 general election, even though they've actually switched their driver's license to a different state. So somebody's got to, again, I'm looking for the log, the report of all the people who have moved out of state and you have purged off the voter rolls. I haven't seen it, haven't heard it. So, you know, I think there's got to be some system to pick up people that are moving out of state. And, you know, and a report that's generated per purging the rolls, whether it's a weekly thing, monthly thing, biannually. So I appreciate it.
Thanks, Jim. So let me just say, appreciate you raising the issues from the primary election. And I think I said this at our Election Board meeting, but the three of us take delivering on our elections very seriously. And we want to ensure, especially during a presidential year, that we unpack every part of the process and take the feedback that we're getting from the community very seriously in terms of how we can improve things. So you have my commitment that we are doing an after-action. Commissioner Mekesha, as Chair of the Board of Elections, is committed to unpacking every part of that process. And so collectively, we're all thinking of the right ways to hold every part of the process, whether it be our people, whether it be our vendors, whether it be our state partners accountable for how we can make improvement. So appreciate you bringing the feedback to the Commissioner's Office. And, you know, we're doing our best to rectify some of the challenges that we faced this past primary. Okay? Any?
Yeah. I'll just echo that. We'll talk more about it on the Election Board meetings. But we're systematically reviewing every step of the mail-in process on how we can make it more efficient. Of course, really, none of the counties were able to meet the 50-day deadline, which is the ideal that we're supposed to meet, because the courts did not confirm the who's on the ballot and who's not, who's qualified. So that's something that really needs to be addressed at a state level. Voter roll maintenance is also a state-level issue. But as for what we can do at the county, we're going to work with all of our vendors to make sure that they have the proper capacity and can efficiently process the hundreds of thousands of ballots they're going to need to for us.
Yeah, that's critical. We know, you know, what the state needs to do. But it's like, what can we do with, you know, what we know we can control? And so I know that we're collectively committed to that. So, all right, anyone else?
Last person is David Morgan.
Last but not least, Mr. Morgan. Come on up. Nice.
I've been waiting for this day.
This is Commissioner's business, right? Because.
Yes, I love it.
This is your main.
Commissioner Majica, he said, I play violin, so. Well, why? Well, I noticed that the county had Mothers Alive happen on Tuesday. And I told my friends, and then I realized it sold out. There's a lot of interest in motherhood. So Mother's Day is coming up, of course, on the 12th of May. So if I can do a little bit to promote it, what, the fiddle?
Mr. Morgan, before you start, I did go to the Mothers Alive Conference. Sorry, it was sold out. You couldn't be there because I know you've been an advocate for Monco Mamas. They were there, did a panel discussion, but it was a really great, great event.
Right. It's just wonderful when motherhood can occur. And we can hopefully also mention, as I mentioned last meeting, the Pregnancy Resource Centers, which have ultrasound equipment and have all kinds of very trained staff. So I, my wife, I need to get the word out. So I'm here kind of on her behalf, too. She said, someone, we can tell more people in the workforce that you have support. You have successful motherhood. The outcomes as part of Monco Mamas, the outcomes being for birth and motherhood. So I put a pitch in for them, too. And also for adoption, because you're going on the road, right? You go into Limerick. So we need to mention to adoption out there and perhaps Pregnancy Resource Centers and helps the women who are having this wonderful role of being mothers. Some women, unfortunately, if they were not knowing enough about their child's wonder how from beginning of the first trimester, heartbeat four weeks, as it says in Children's Hospital website, arms and legs are coming in there four to eight weeks, and fully formed at 12 weeks. I'm a real advocate for life. And I've just known in personal family situations that someone was being influenced to not have the life, be there when the life came. And that person's a teacher now and a mother of two and teaches other teachers. So it can be really successful. If I'm going to run out of time and place, I make sure I do that. And figure since it's your 100th day, probably need to relax a little bit. So it's kind of soothing, too, here for you, my Brahms. What do you think it is?
It's not taps, is it?
That's definitely not Brahms.
No, nothing about water going over the dam either. Water music, not no water music.
Water over the dam. That's good.
But I have Brahms' lullaby. How about that? A little tiny bit of it. I have to see it somewhere later tonight. So let's see. Get a little up here, and this is, my only notes for speaking are Brahms' notes. How about that?
Great.
So take the good news on tour and have a great Mother's Day.
Thank you.
You did a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional? Okay. Any closing Commissioner comments? All right, hearing none. Upcoming meeting dates, Retirement Board meeting is today at 1:00 PM in the boardroom. Election Board meeting is, is it tomorrow? It's tomorrow. Okay.
Friday.
It's tomorrow at 11:00 AM. Board of Commissioners meeting is May 23, as I mentioned earlier, 6:00 PM at the Limerick Township Building. So I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the May 2, 2024 meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comments? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Next up is Salary Board. I'd like to invite our Controller up. Now that survived my, my throat. I said, can somebody get her a water? They did. Oh, good. Okay. All right, so I'd like to invite Maureen up to review the Salary Board list.
Thank you.
Good morning, members of Salary Board. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Salary Board list. It is a three-page document dated May 1, 2024 with a timestamp of 9:30 AM. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for Salary Board consideration.
Great, thank you. Like to make a motion to approve the May 2, 2024 Salary Board presentation, as given by Ms. Maureen Calder. Let me fix my notes here. Is there a second? Second by Controller Sanchez. Any board comments? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the May 2, 2024 meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Controller Sanchez. Any board comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Meeting adjourned. Thanks, everyone.